Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Terry Wilson is with Christ our Redeemer Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. You'd step forward and ask for it to ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Father God, Creator of the universe, you alone are worthy of praise. As we gather together as the city of Oklahoma, we ask that your hand be guiding these men and women as they guide our city. And as we begin to remember for certain an anniversary from last year of all the tornadoes, we ask your hand to be on those who are still suffering from PTSD, from lack of homes, lack of housing. And Father God, make the actions here reflect the needs of others. You are worthy of praise, and we give you the glory. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, as you may know, it is Emergency Medical Services Week, and we are so fortunate in this community to be served by Emsa, and they not only serve Oklahoma City, but many other communities around the state of Oklahoma. I'll ask our Emsa friends to come on up. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas each day residents of Oklahoma City and across the state rely on emergency medical service systems to help them in their hour of greatest need, and they're able to take comfort in knowing that well-trained, caring men and women are only a phone call away when the need for emergency medical treatment arises. Whereas emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and first responders serve on the front lines of our health care and public health system, and their timely actions make the difference between life and death on a daily basis. Working alongside these trained professionals are many others whose dedication makes the EMS system function, including emergency dispatchers, physicians, nurses, and researchers, as well as colleagues in fire service and law enforcement. Whereas EMS agencies are an integral part of our community's health security strategy, and they help to build community resilience by strengthening all aspects of the emergency response system. Whereas whether responding by car, ambulance, helicopter, boat, or plane, this diverse group of dedicated Americans provide crucial pre-hospital medical care to fellow Oklahomans when they need it most. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 18 through 25, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to take time to recognize the inspiring contributions of EMS practitioners and honor their dedication to serving their community.
Let's show our appreciation to our first responders here who've done so much in our community, especially in Melina last year. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor Cornet, members of the council. We are blessed to have such a fine, quality group of employees such as Mel Spurrella, who's here. She's a 30-year Emsa veteran who is a recent recipient of the Star Life Award, one of many in the nation, who recently was honored in Washington, DC. Together with our allied agencies that respond with, health care partners and other community partners, we're proud to make Oklahoma City safer. So on behalf of the men and women of Emsa, thank you.
Well, we have a deep appreciation for your work, and we're going to show it with this applause. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Congratulations. It is also that time of the year when we get out and fill the boot to help out MDA, and we have several people from our fire department and the union representative, Phil Cypress, here. Everybody, come on up. George, come on up. Stand up. We have a proclamation to show our support for MDA and our firefighters and the vast amount of money that comes up. And I'll ask the clerk to read our proclamation as we get settled.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Professional Firefighters Association, Local 157, is hosting the annual Fill the Boot campaign to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association, MDA. Whereas the firefighters have partnered with the MDA since 1954 and freely give their time to fill the boot and other MDA campaigns throughout the year. Whereas in 2013, Oklahoma City firefighters, through the overwhelming generosity of Oklahoma City residents, raised over $320,000 for the MDA. Whereas those donations support continued research of neuro-muscular diseases and help over 2,000 families in Oklahoma with critical medical services and supplies for loved ones affected by these diseases. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 19 through 24, 2014, as Firefighter Fill the Boot Week in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to support this worthwhile cause.
Let's show our appreciation to the MDA and our firefighters. Chief, give our citizens a little bit of advice on how to deal with this situation. They pull up at an intersection and they see our firefighters out there. What's the best way they should proceed at that point?
Well, we should be clearly identifiable. They'll be wearing their caps, they'll be in their uniforms. We wear traffic safety vests, so they should be able to see them. We instruct them very directly not to interrupt the traffic flow and to be very, very careful and to not create any kind of problem. So again, when they're stopped at a red light, they'll see them, and the firefighters will come out when the traffic has stopped and try and do as much collecting as they can. The light turns green, we back off and let the traffic flow. So just be watching for them. Again, we've instructed them very, again, directly to be very, very careful out there. And again, we just appreciate all the support we get. Our community's really great. For a large city, we do better by capita probably than a lot of other large cities across the country, and so we're proud of the fact that we've got great citizens here who support this.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars are raised annually by this effort, and Caleb's got to get back to Cimarron Middle School, right? Yeah, Cimarron Middle School. He was telling me that he's about to get into Algebra I, so we're pulling for you. I got a feeling. I got a feeling you can handle it, though. But Noel, thank you for bringing him down today. And Caleb, I guess you approve of today's proclamation?
Yeah.
Figured you would. All right. Thank you all very much. Let's show our appreciation to our firefighters and MDA. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. It is National Public Works Week, and we have with us Eric Winger, Debbie Miller, Kristy Wall. Let's see. Paul, Catherine, Patty. Everybody make it? All right. I'll ask the clerk to read the proclamation, and we'll get settled up here.
Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewer, streets, bridges, traffic, drainage, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public work departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 18 through 24, 2014, as National Public Works Week in Oklahoma City, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Let's show our appreciation to our public works department. Our department head, Eric Winger, is here. Eric, I couldn't help notice, but all you guys are responsible for is things like water, sewer, streets, bridges, traffic, drainage, public buildings, and solid waste collection. So that's it.
That's it. That's a full day. And that's it. But on behalf of the public works employees of the city of Oklahoma City, which are nearly 400 strong, and the other public works officials that serve our community, I mean, we appreciate the recognition for next week and just the service of our employees, the dedication, and the understanding of the citizens as we complete a lot of pretty key priority projects.
Yeah, we do have a lot of construction. What can we do for you?
You know, I think obviously just the understanding is we work in the field, as we fill those potholes, as we do bridge repairs, as we widen streets and do all those projects, just public safety, just making sure that we keep our public workers safe, and just recognize that they're doing their best job.
Slow down when you're in a construction zone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pass those bond issues. That's right. Appreciate you guys. Thank you all very much. And we also have some representatives from the YMCA. I've lost sight of them momentarily. Come on up. We are about to celebrate the 125th anniversary of the YMCA in Oklahoma City. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City was formed on Sunday, May 14, 1889, by a small group of men at Postmaster George A. Beedler's post office when Oklahoma City was barely three weeks old. Whereas the Y is a cause-driven organization that strengthens community through youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility, and recognizes the importance of working together to create lasting social and personal change. Whereas the YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City has provided tens of millions of dollars in direct financial assistance to individuals and families who would otherwise be unable to participate in Y programs. Whereas the Y serves more than 160,000 children and teens in Oklahoma, providing a wide range of activities to nurture potential, including teen clubs, sports leagues, family nights, and community service projects. Whereas the Y's cause is to strengthen community and work side by side with our neighbors to make sure that everyone, regardless of age, income, or background, has the opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive. Whereas the YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City has been a cornerstone of the community for 125 years. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 14, 2014, as YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to the YMCA and its board, its staff members. And Mike Grady is in charge of the Y here in Oklahoma City. I think this sentence says it all. You serve more than 160,000 children and teens in Oklahoma. That's pretty impressive, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very proud of our service to this community over 125 years and very fortunate to have the support of the community and the leadership of many, many volunteers and staff. And so on behalf of all of those individuals, we're very proud to receive your proclamation.
And I noticed there's a book that's been published that chronicles the 125 years of the YMCA. Some fascinating pictures in many ways reflects the history of Oklahoma City itself, because the YMCA was there in those very early days. But we appreciate the work that you're doing in 2014 and certainly for the last 124 years and 364 days. Thank you all very much. Congratulations, Ford. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Great to see you, Brenda. Let's show our appreciation one more time. All right, I'll ask Crystal Handerhan to come up. In the city of Oklahoma City, we have 4,000-plus employees, and Crystal has been named our Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month. She has outshone all 4,000 of her contemporaries. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Crystal Handerhan has been a city employee for 16 and a half years and is a Will Rogers Senior Center Supervisor in the Recreation Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas Crystal develops programming, coordinates events, supervisors, employees, handles patron concerns, and ensures that facility is running smoothly. Whereas Crystal's first and most noticeably achievement upon becoming supervisor was cleaning the center until the aged tile floors sparkled. Whereas Crystal had a heartfelt desire to increase the types of programs that were available and studied other successful senior activity centers, now the Will Rogers Senior Center offers passive and active programs, as well as the core offerings such as arts and crafts classes. Whereas Crystal's foremost concern is for the safety of the center's participants. She consistently uses good workplace safety practices. Crystal is generally interested in meeting the needs of the existing participants and strives to draw new seniors through interesting, fun programs. Whereas Crystal makes sure that each person who walks in the door is greeted by her or one of her staff. It is important to Crystal to make everyone feel welcome. Whereas this council desires to recognize Crystal Handerhan for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Crystal Handerhan, May 2014, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation to Crystal. We do need maybe a little bit more of a formality, but we do need to vote on this. So it's a motion and a second. And cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Crystal, congratulations. I know you were sweating that out. Crystal is specifically tasked with helping us at the Will Rogers Senior Center, and a couple of hundred people a day come in there.
Yes, hopefully. That's what we want. Yes, absolutely.
Well, we appreciate that. That's a growing segment of our population. As the baby boomers get older, we're going to have more and more seniors in this community, and we're trying to take some steps to probably get out ahead of that. So yeah, what can the citizens do to help you?
Just come out and support the center. We have all the Recreation Department, we have all kinds of things going on. We're the best kept secret in the city, I think. We have an indoor pool people don't know about. We have a summer kickoff coming up on the 24th, and just come out and see what we have to offer.
Where can we get more information about this?
You can call the Parks Department at 297-2211 and get all the information you need.
All right, and what time do you open at your specific center?
We're open eight to four Monday through Friday.
So eight to four, and a senior is described as?
55 and older.
Okay, 55 and older, starting eight o'clock every weekday morning at the Will Rogers Senior Center, which is on Portland at 30?
3501, north, Pat Murphy Drive.
3501, and as she's mentioned, Pat Murphy Drive, the former Parks Director. Crystal, congratulations. All this applause is for you. Thank you very much. And we also are honoring our Teacher of the Month. The Oklahoma City Rotary Club helps us do that, and I'll ask the representatives for Kristy Bolster to come forward. And this is, you know, a little bit like the Academy Awards. They say, "Accepting the Award For," because Kristy Bolster is a fifth-grade teacher at Western Heights, but she's also in the National Guard, and she is out training for a potential deployment. And so in her stead is one of her other teachers and the principal. Let's go ahead and have the clerk read the resolution.
Whereas Kristy Bolster has been named Teacher of the Month for May 2014 by Western Heights Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Kristy has been teaching for five years, beginning with third grade at John Glenn Elementary, and currently fifth grade at Bridgestone Intermediate Center. Kristy has 12 years of military service, and that training has shaped her teaching methods, starting with organization and discipline as the keys to successful teaching and learning. Whereas Kristy believes that every child wants to learn, and as a teacher, she must think outside the box to help students realize their potential. Whereas in Kristy's classroom, every child learns that they're a part of her team, and learning is fun and exciting. Of course, she can turn military in an instant if bad behavior invades the classroom. Whereas Kristy is enthusiastic, caring, loving, and totally respects her students, and she strives to instill those same qualities in them. She's an excellent teacher, dedicated to helping her students grow into intelligent, thoughtful adults. Whereas in her spare time, Kristy continues her commitment to the Oklahoma Air National Guard, spending over 1,000 hours per year in training and activities that directly impact the security and safety of our country. And most recently, she was a response team member following the devastating May 2013 Moore tornado. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Kristy Bolster on her selection as May 2014 Teacher of the Month by Western Heights Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
And again, we'll need a motion on this item and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation to Kristy. Kristy, then it's sent to her. And I tell you, you're a friend of hers, and she knows a little bit about this.
Yes, I'm her co-teacher across the hall, been friends with her several years now. She's a wonderful teacher. I'm very proud and honored to be accepting this for her since she is in deployment training right now. She's just, she's an awesome teacher. I love her and just so proud of her.
She's obviously a very special person, and Jennifer, I know she represents a lot of great teachers in Western Heights.
Yes, she does. We have a great staff, and we're very honored to be able to present this to her when she returns next Monday. She'll be back for the last week of school.
And this applause is for all three of you. So thank you all very much. These are appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission and the MAPS Trust.
Move the item second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item E is travel expenses for me to attend the Conference of Mayors Meeting in Dallas next month.
Move the item second.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to approve, no, it's to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings on April 29th and May 6th, and then item B is to approve it on April 22nd.
Move the item.
All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Mayor, outside of item 8B, which is listed on the agenda, a few more. On page 21, under item 8G1, item I, 2113 Northeast 27th Street. Whereas that be stricken, the owner is removed. On page 22, item D, under item H1, I guess. Item D, 8200 Glory Road. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. Item E, 648 Hunter's Hill Road. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. Item I, 3720 North Pennsylvania. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. Item K, 1201 Northwestern. Whereas that be stricken, owner has concerned, has secured. Item L, 906 Northeast 2nd Street. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. Item O, 1840 Southwest 15th Street. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. Item R, 30 Southwest 25th Street. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. Item U, 1500 Southeast 45th Street. Whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item V, 3220 Southwest 72nd Street. Whereas that be stricken, owner has secured. And item X, 445 Northwest 119th Street. Whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. And then moving to page 25, under Claims for Denial, we'd ask that the claim of, under item 8Q1C, Clovis Night, whereas that be stricken, the claimant has provided additional information which will require further research.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we're set to council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. All right, comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Move the item second.
Three items here. Any comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items.
Mayor, before we move on, Bob Beckhoff and Chad Huntington are here. They're our long-term operators of the canal boats. They blazoned the trail in 98 when nobody else was really interested, or 99, I guess it was, when no one else was interested in bringing boats in. And so I recognize Bob. Bob, you looked the same as you did back in 99.
Little boy here. What's that?
I'm sorry. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Do you have some individual considerations?
All right, are there any individual considerations on the consent?
Your Honor, I have a question on 6B Baker.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, 6AU.
All right, Pat, you want to get started with item B?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a question of approximately, how much will this system cost?
I think Amy will come in from procurement in a minute. I think she can answer that.
I know it's out for RFP, so we don't know exactly yet, but you know?
We should have a guy in that area.
Round dollars about.
Right. And there's Amy. And for the record and agenda prep, we thought you might ask a question on this one.
I can't understand why.
Which item?
B.
D?
B.
B. It's B in Boyd.
Okay.
About how much are we spending there? In round dollars? I know we can't get exact, but just approximately.
I believe it's around $60,000.
Thank you very much. That's all I want.
All right, and John, item AU.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is from the Oklahoma City Housing Authority, and I just wanted to say publicly thank you, Mark Gillette, and also the Housing Authority, for working with the developer as we tried to change the corridor of 23rd and Martin Luther King and 26th and Martin Luther King. So I just wanted to personally say thank you to Mark Gillette and his staff.
Great project.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
All right, move the item separately.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require separate votes. The first is a series of zoning cases, and number one is an ABC issue in Ward 5. The address is 9101A South Pennsylvania Avenue. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, is there anyone here to speak? Okay. There's not been any protest on this. I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 8A1 from anyone? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is an ABC issue in Ward 7. The address is 30 Northeast 2nd Street. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that the applicant is present. Do we have any protests from Adam?
No one has signed up to speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Richard McCowen, City Center Development, 4409 Cannon Drive in Norman. Really honored to be here today and very excited about this project. What we have, we're requesting an ABC3 overlay zoning. This is the first, it's the first time I've ever worked on this type of a zoning case. And a bit about the project, this is OKC. It was originally designed to go a bit north of here up on Fourth, and for a variety of reasons, it just didn't work out, and so we adopted this from Matt Brown, and we're incredibly excited and grateful to be shepherding it through this stage of its life. It's a shipping container building stacked up, three stories tall. There's 17 total shipping container units. And the restaurant bar, well, I suppose it's more of a bar technically, because it has a really small kitchen. It's located here in the downstairs portion of this shipping container furthest from the street. Show you a couple of other images. Here's a view looking onto the park area that was originally built with the Here's a view, uh, looking onto the, uh, park area that was originally built with the, the Maywood, uh, Tiff District. And that park has been, uh, somewhat neglected or, or in, unactivated. It's kind of a park that there's not much to do down there. And the real inspiration, when we started thinking about bringing OKC, uh, to these, these lots that we own, was to make them really activate this park and make it a gathering place and a hangout spot that the residents that, that now live at Level and the future mosaic and Maywood Apartments would enjoy, you know, coming and hanging out and, and making it a, uh, creating a sense of place. Last illustration really shows the context. You see the, the Aloft Hotel and of course, Level, uh, off to the east. The last picture we have shows the, the detail of the area we're asking to, to overlay the zoning so that we can serve, uh, people out on the outdoor terrace and basically retransform this, this little intersection of Oklahoma and 2nd Street. Uh, I have with me here today also, uh, Cody Rowan and Joey Morris, who are the, uh, the founders, uh, that we heard about last week at the Development Roundtable of the mule that's been so key to the redevelopment of the Plaza District. And we're incredibly excited to have them as, as our, uh, our key anchor for this project. The upstairs portions of OKC are office tenants. We're still working out what the, the third, uh, or the fourth ground floor, uh, box will be. It may be a shoe retailer and it may be a ice cream store. We, we really don't know. And we're trying to get that mix just right to really serve the community. Anyhow, we think it's incredibly cool. Uh, we're really excited about it. Uh, it will serve food. It just, because of the scale of the kitchen, it won't serve enough food to get it over the 51% uh, needed to be a, a normal ABC3. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Would G-Sandwiches on the menu?
This actually, this, there is a bit of a secret concept. Uh, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't quite been ready to release it, but it's going to be astounding and, uh, and equally amazing.
Richard, how many people will that accommodate indoors?
Uh, Councilman, I believe we have 52 seats inside. It's, uh, about 16 feet wide and, uh, 40, about 56 feet long and it's longest access in, in the restaurant. It's a, it's a small place.
Okay. And there's parking directly south of there? Is that on this map?
That's, that is correct. We're, um, just over the railroad tracks from the, the main street.
And you can have access to the parking lot for, okay. Yes.
It really is a interesting little, um, hidden gem over there. It's, it is underutilized and I think this is a terrific opportunity to, to activate it. I used to own that building. Uh, 16th, I owned, uh, 16 Northwest, Northeast 2nd Street. So, just on the other side of that. It's really exciting to see you do this.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 7. It's at 4345 North Lincoln. It's currently C3, Community Commercial, and I2, Moderate Industrial, and it would become a new plan unit development. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up to talk? I see the applicant and developer, uh, is here. Uh, this is what used to be growing up, the, the old Clarion, uh, Hotel. And, uh, their plan is to, uh, make this particular, uh, building apartments. Uh, for years, on top of years, this particular piece of property, uh, has sat on Lincoln, uh, being vacant. Uh, and so, it's good to see, uh, somebody trying to do something good, uh, with it. With that being said, thank you, Mr. Tenelbaum, uh, for coming. Thank you for your work. Uh, I move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions then on item 8A3? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8A4 is a zoning case at 1540 Southeast 29th Street. It's currently R1, Single Family Residential, and it would become a new simplified Plan Unit Development District. John?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions then on this item? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 8400 North May Avenue. It's currently, um, there's a spud and a, and a Plan Unit Development District, and it's going to be a new spud if approved. Ed?
Are the applicant or any protesters here? I guess the only, the only question I have is about this 10-foot perimeter wall around it. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, no protesters. So, I'll, do you, do you have a?
The discussion at Planning Commission about the wall was about the property being adjacent to May, and there was some, uh, thought that it would be a benefit of some noise attenuation because of the wall at that height.
So, it's for noise attenuation? So, it's, does it go around the entire perimeter or just along?
Yes, it's, it's going to be a contained private, they're individual lots, but they're smaller lots and the coverage on the buildings or, or the lots are 75%. But there wasn't really any, there was no protest. The only concern we had about protests was some drainage issues, but they've resolved that. And they could do an eight-foot fence by code and they wanted to add two feet.
Okay. All right. I'll move for approval.
Cast your votes. And item 8A5 passed unanimously. Item 8B has been deferred until May 27th. And item 8C is an opportunity for us to close a right-of-way in Ward 7 on Southeast 38th Street, west of South Missouri Avenue. John, you okay with this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
Um, I move for approval, then I'm going to make another motion for the emergency.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
And I move for the emergency.
Cast your votes. Passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Item AD is a new ordinance that's going to be introduced by Eric Winger from our Public Works Department, and this comes to us from the Traffic Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We've got a, an ordinance introduction today. This is actually for Section 32329, 32342, and it actually deals with ADA accessible parking spaces, um, and, and how the Traffic Commission and how they make recommendations to you on how those are proceeding. So, what we currently have is, is a requirement that there's a maximum number of handicap parking spaces is limited to two for each individual business or governmental agency. And we're finding a lot in the 180 area that there's a need for more than just these two spaces, and so, an amendment is desired. To give you a brief history of, of this ordinance, prior to 1970, there were actually no requirements for handicap accessible spaces. And there's actually been a number of revisions to this ordinance, beginning in 1978, um, was when it was first introduced. It was amended in 94 and also again in 2004. Um, but again, the reason for us doing this is the federal courthouse is, is one that requires more than two spaces. There was a particular amendment that addressed that for that particular building, but we're now finding the need for additional handicap spaces in our downtown area and would like the Traffic Commission to have the authority to be able to recommend those to you in the future. So, with that introduction today, we'll be happy to answer questions and, and we'll walk through this as we go forward.
We'll have a public hearing. Let's see, it's going to be set for May 27th, and then we'll be voting on final adoption on June 10th. Item just being introduced today. How about a motion to move it forward?
Move forward.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8E is another ordinance that's being introduced today, and Aubrey Hammond Tree, our planning director, is coming forward. This would, uh, provide some uniformity amongst our design and review boards.
Correct. Good morning. Uh, this is being introduced today. This is an amendment to the Downtown Review Districts. We're trying to do a series of cleanups to our design districts. We've been compiling a list over the years of things that are pretty much clarifications and administrative changes. This does affect almost all of the Design Review Districts. We're trying to make the membership and terms more consistent among all of these districts. Um, several corrections to organization of members is being made, too. Um, some of the other more substantive changes to this ordinance are that we're removing the submittal requirements. When an applicant comes in, to do an application at the city, they have to fill out an application form. Instead of having all of the specific requirements for their submittal codified in the code, we're directing them to the application requirement. We're also clarifying our appeal process to the Board of Adjustment. And then we're making a couple of changes within the Design Review Districts to the regulations and guidelines. Within downtown, we're setting a certain limit for specific building materials and types. This is something that the Design Review Committee has, um, needed clarification so that they can ensure quality materials and use of those materials, um, in a widespread component across the building. In the Scenic River District, we're also exempting certain accessory structures and building additions from having to meet the height and setback requirements. And we're also clarifying where parking should be located on sites adjacent to the river in the Scenic River District. So, that really covers the majority of the changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Today's item just introduces the concept. It'll be set for a public hearing on May 27th, and then council is scheduled for final adoption on June 10th. Any comments or questions today? All right. And we got a motion to move it forward. Is there a second? Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. And item 8F, and Aubrey is still there because she's introducing another ordinance on, uh, item 8F. And what does this one pertain to, Aubrey?
This one pertains to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. This was done separately because it's a, it's a different process. We have the ordinance itself, and then we have the guidelines that the ordinance references. Same process. We're doing a lot of cleanup and administrative changes to this. We're establishing some new criteria in the HP Guidelines to help the Commission, um, make decisions in a more equitable way. We are establishing new criteria for approving demolition of garages and other accessory structures. This has been something that the Commission has struggled with, and now they're able to consider the size and the condition and the impact on the historic district at that garage or garage addition. Um, there's also some clarification about the designation process for new HP and HL districts in the code, which provides a timeline for taking action on those proposed districts for the Commission and limits the frequency on how often somebody can consider a new designation. We've also modified some regulations about the maximum size of signs in the HP District. Um, before it was just a set size. Now, the size of the sign corresponds to the size of the building. In the Guidelines, which is part two of your, um, ordinance amendment, we have better organized the Guidelines by topic. Before, all of the Guidelines were just in a, in a running list. We've also changed some requirements for review to enable certain applicants to no longer have to get a CA if they're doing in-kind replacement of composition roofs. We also are able to make an administrative review possible for certain applicants who are doing minor revisions like landscaping, um, decks, storage buildings, and swimming pools. This makes the process much easier and faster within the HP neighborhoods. There are a couple of new guidelines being added for constructing building additions onto historic homes so that we can make sure that the size of the addition is appropriate in relation to the size of the site. And new guidelines for constructing new garages, making sure that the historic garage, that there are considerations about the placement of the lot and distinguishing between a historic garage versus building a new garage. So, we think these changes are going to help the HP Commission and applicants, um, get their approvals quicker and have a better process.
Aubrey, have we sat down with folks in the neighborhoods to work through these yet?
You know, this series of amendments has been developed over a period of time with working with applicants as they come in to get their CAs. And we've been keeping this list going and working with the HP Commission in a series of workshops to address the needs of the residents. So, this is in response to a lot of things that we felt we could improve upon in the process.
Can we be fairly sure, and, you know, I think if we announce it from here, but could you also be sure that the neighborhoods are aware that there's a public hearing coming up in two weeks and?
Absolutely.
Maybe get a little additional attention to that so we can get people's opinions before we get too far down the road?
Would be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah. Aubrey, of these, you keep referring them as guidelines, and so, they're not mandatory? They're, they're not, uh, iron friction on what they can do?
Right. Um, the reference in the code to the guidelines gives, uh, power to the Commission to use those guidelines in their consideration of an application. They're not regulations, but the HP Commission really tries to uphold those guidelines whenever possible. They have the discretion to not apply them.
If I was an owner and I had a piece of property that was affected by a, a guideline, would, then I have, would I appeal those, this decision then to the Board of Adjustment? Is that process outlined in here?
That would be the process, and it is, um, outlined in the code.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Mayor, just want to point out, I think this is really a process that's worked very well as far as the maturity of the HP Code and the Commission and staff as we've gone forward. Years ago, I don't think our citizens felt very good about the process. I don't, I think they thought it was cumbersome. They weren't sure what was expected of them at the HP Commission. And I think, I think we, we matured all groups. The staff has matured, the Commission's matured, and I think the process has matured. And I get a lot fewer complaints about the process, and I think people understand what's going forth. They're able to have the flexibility to improve their homes, and yet, we are able to maintain the historic, uh, fabric of, of the neighborhoods. And I really do believe that, that, you know, it's a process, but, but we've improved it greatly over the last few years.
Over the years, there've been so many changes and new materials and new products, new types of windows, things that, you know, I really appreciate you being, um, sensitive to, uh, making it a little bit easier for the homeowners to comply and yet, use energy-efficient types of materials and projects that, that everybody's interested in. So, it's nice that we're sort of an evolving, growing body, and thank you very much.
Thanks. We strive to do that.
And the addition of Katie Frittl into the process, I think it's been helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
Item is being introduced today. A public hearing is being set for May 27th. And again, the council is, uh, expected to vote on a final adoption on June 10th. How about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. And this item moves forward. Public hearing, May 27th. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have one person that has signed up, Suzanne Gill. Good morning, Suzanne.
Good morning.
Yeah. I will need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Suzanne Gill, and I live at, uh, 1024 Locust in Midwest City, Oklahoma.
Okay. And your concern today is about which property?
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, sir. It's item 8G1E.
Okay. It's at, uh, 10,900 East Wilshire Boulevard, then in Ward 7.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, uh, we're looking at a picture of it here. What can you tell us about the history of this property?
Well, I purchased this in, uh, 96, and, um, to be honest, I purchased it to live there. Um, the pictures, I'm, I'm trying to see exactly. I, I've been to the property. The last time I was there was, uh, Friday. Because I don't know what that is. That's the hull of the roof. And, um, the reason I'm here is to, uh, ask for just a 60-day extension to, uh, comply, to make the repairs to this property. to this property. I know pictures can sometimes appear worse than it actually is. The first thing that I need to do to gain access to this property is I need to remove a lot of growth and trees because the property's not even accessible for me to do the repairs.
When are you going to get started on these repairs?
Immediately, sir.
Okay. John, you want to leave this one on and then have her work with staff?
Yes, if we can leave it on and you work with staff, staff is willing to work with you on this particular, on both properties, so we want to leave this on. But if you can just work with staff and, but yes, definitely leave it on.
Suzanne, as long as you're working on the project and working with staff, you won't have any trouble from us. But if for some reason you get delayed, you need to let them know immediately because this is still on the list for demolition.
Yes, sir. Let me just make one statement is the problem that I've had is when I did make repairs and I have been vandalized, things that have been stolen. So once I cleared the trees and such, I've been advised that I need to put a fence around the structure before I have materials and what's out there so that they're not stolen. That is my intention. It's the only property that I own and I really would like to save this house.
Well, it sounds like a project you're going to have your hands full for this summer.
It is, it is, sir.
Suzanne, thanks. If you'll just continue to work with Charles, make sure you have his contact information as he works with you on the process.
Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else here hoping to speak under an item listed under 8G? All right, do we have a motion? Motion then? Second. Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. We're on to item 8H. This is a public hearing regarding a dilapidated structure in an HP district and it's in Ward 2 at 315 Northwest 25th Street. No one has signed up to speak. My notes say it was approved by the HP commission.
Okay, so I'll move for approval.
All right, any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item 8I. It's a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on a long list of items on 8I and it passes unanimously. Item 8J is a request for a revocable right-of-way use permit to hold an event called the NSO Hungry Man Challenge on 9th and Broadway in Ward 6. And Anne Harbor is here to tell us more about this event. Good morning, Anne. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Like you said, my name is Anne Harbor and I'm at 8101 South Walker and Sweet C in Oklahoma City. I work for Neighborhood Services Organization, one nonprofit that provides safe, healthy homes, dental care, nutrition to the homeless and low-income in the Oklahoma City area. And the NSO Hungry Man Challenge is our annual fundraiser. What it is, is an eat then run 10K relay race through downtown Oklahoma City. It's teams of two or four that get dressed up in costume and then they eat a portion of food from one of four 9th Street restaurants that we have participating. And then they run a lap and tag off and the next person eats and then runs. So it's a really fun event. It helps us raise awareness about our agency and we'll be having that this Saturday, May 17th.
Anne, tell us about your agency.
We've been around for 94 years now, I think. It's called Neighborhood Services Organization. And we provide permanent and transitional housing for the homeless, for homeless families, for young men who've aged out of foster care. And then the permanent housing is for homeless adults with a mental illness. We also have a low-cost dental clinic. It's mainly for the uninsured, but it's open to anyone. It's just general dental care. The only thing we don't do are root canals. So lots of different services. And we also have two WIT clinics, one of which is the second largest in the state.
Sounds really exciting. I'd move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8J. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8K is a resolution which would make some alterations to the corridor shore plan and Kathy O'Connor is here.
Thank you. This morning, we have an amendment to the corridor shore urban renewal plan. Just to give you a little bit of background about the corridor shore urban renewal plan, it was originally adopted by the city council in 2010 after a declaration of blight that was made by the council in February of 2010. We approved a first amendment to the plan in November of 2012 that changed the boundaries of the plan to include the MAPS 3 convention center site. Urban renewal has been assisting the city with the acquisitions related to the convention center, so we needed to include that in the acquisition area. This amendment has been proposed to authorize additional acquisition areas to help implement the plan. It does not change the overall plan, urban renewal plan areas like the first amendment did, but it does authorize additional acquisition areas. Part of the urban renewal process is that the city council, the planning commission, the city council, the urban renewal authority all have to approve what the acquisition areas will be. And this one is really designed to help us begin to implement the private investment piece that's a part of the corridor shore urban renewal plan. We are beginning to move into implementation as the park nears construction and the convention center also nears the time when it will begin so that it's important that we begin to have all the tools that we can to help spur private investment in the area. Just as a note, the urban renewal authority approved this plan amendment in January of 2014 and it's also gone to the planning commission and has received a recommendation for approval. Let's go to the slide that talks about the areas so that we can talk about those a little bit more. The areas that are shaded or hashed show the areas that we are proposing to add to the plan, to the acquisition area, I mean. So kind of significantly, the east, the area east of the park, there's a block between Broadway and Gaylord that was not in the original acquisition plan that was approved by council. It's become obvious as we look at plans for private investment that developing those two blocks adjacent on the east side of the park are going to be very important. I think it may have almost been an oversight that we didn't include that block in the original acquisition plan area. We've also included an acquisition area that kind of surrounds the west side of the convention center site. Again, we see this area as being important to the continued development adjacent to the convention center. And finally, the area on the east side of the lower park has, is again, a part of the implementation that we see in the future as that lower park begins to develop. Just as a comment about where we are, we are beginning the acquisition process for the lower park, working with the city to begin that. So a couple of other things that are a part of this amendment, the urban renewal authority in January also approved the use of owner participation agreements so that we have a way to work with property owners to get the kind of development that we want without having to acquire all the property. It really is similar to the agreements that we use with tax increment financing, for example. And I would see that this is a tool that we could use along with TIF to get the kind of development that we think is important to the success of the park and the other MAPS 3 projects in the area. So that is a new provision that's a part of the plan. It's something that we'll probably will be including in all of our plans in the future as a way that we can work with property owners, get the kind of development that we need without having to do acquisitions. So, and we do have several developers that have, and property owners in the area that have contacted us recently, interested in working together and entering into those agreements so that we can begin to do that kind of development. I think it's a really good tool for us so that we don't have to have so much money for acquisition. Just as another note, last year, the council allocated $2.3 million to the urban renewal authority for acquisition in the buffer area. To date, today we have a balance still of about $1.5 million, 1.4 million. We have done some selected acquisition in the area, mostly, well, working with people who are voluntarily interested in selling their property. We have not used eminent domain for any of those acquisitions so far, so.
About how many property owners are we talking about in this area? Are there dozens or hundreds?
Dozens, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There's a, there is a map that's attached to your agenda item that shows the parcels that can give you some idea of how many, I think it has, it's exhibit 4B.
Yeah.
That shows kind of how many parcels there are. There are, that's a parcel map, it's not necessarily an ownership map. So obviously, one owner might own multiple parcels and that is mostly the case in this area.
Okay.
I have a question. You may already answered this, but so why, what are the reasons of why we can't, that urban renewal needs to go in and basically help or use the tools? Like, why can't the, we can't just trust the market to develop these areas on their own?
Well, I mean, typically, we like to trust the market and we work very closely with private property owners to let the market develop the properties as they will. But the area is so important to the city, the areas especially adjacent to the park are so important that we want to make sure that we get the kind of development that we want and have some way of controlling it, really. And one of the ways that we can do that is by controlling the property. Another way is through these owner participation agreements that can help us work with property owners. The market is always going to have, is going to drive what kind of, you know, the density or the number of units or the rents, things like that, but the quality of the development, the finishes, the materials people use. And if we get into incentives and create a TIF district in this area, then maybe we can drive things like density and units and things like that, so.
Well, I've always thought that the way that government controls the, what is developed there is through zoning, not necessarily through, I guess I'm just still kind of confused on what exactly the tools that urban renewal is going to use to guide the development. Like what exactly, what does that look like?
Well, the most effective tool that we have is acquisition of property.
Right.
And we are very limited in the amount of money that we have for that, so we're not really in the business of doing a lot of large-scale acquisition. But as we acquire property, that's the strongest tool that we have. And then, again, owner participation agreements, we do have some other ability to clear title and help fix things that are messed up with property titles and things like that.
Kathy? Kathy, this way.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I think it's critically important that we acquire as much property as possible to, as you say, control the quality of the development around here. And I have a concern that people will rush in and begin developing this area with a short-sighted perspective on this. And if we can think in terms of 50 years from now, what do we want the corridor shore park to be like, similar to Central Park in New York City? I think it's very important that we control this as best we can. I've got two questions. One, how far south does the downtown review committee reach as far as its authority?
I may not be the right person to answer that question. I think it extends all the way to the, to the, there's different levels of the downtown zoning district. Some of this is in the downtown zoning district. I think the piece that goes to I-40 and then the rest of it is probably in the scenic river overlay zoning district.
Well, again, I just think this is critically important, this development, especially, I'm more concerned with the area south of I-40 personally. I think we need to protect this area. My second question, and Aubrey will get to that question in just a second, is why didn't we try to expand the southern portion of the park westward to Walker Avenue?
I think it's a function of the budget, frankly, and the plan for the park that was originally set out. I think, you know, we were trying to get that linkage created from the central business district to the Oklahoma River. And, you know, this is really a pretty substantial-sized park for a city of our size and in a downtown environment.
Well, okay, now Aubrey, as far as how far south does the downtown review committees reach, extend?
It goes all the way down to the river's edge.
Okay, so this would fall within their review process?
The whole, the whole piece, yes.
Again, one final time, I think it's critically important that we are involved as much as possible in the development of the property, including the private development along the side of the park. I'd just hate to see people rush in, do low-quality type development and thereby just tie up the property. And really, I would say we need to take a very long-term perspective to the development of this area because it's got tremendous potential.
And I would say that that's one of the things that the urban renewal plan process does, is that it does take a very long-term perspective on things. Kind of go back to Councilman Greiner's question about what are some of the other tools that we can use. Zoning obviously is a very critical one in the, in the package. And this area in particular, we've been working with the city's planning department on looking at using form-based code and kind of really using the city's powers of regulation to drive the quality of development. So it all works together as a package of tools that we can use to make sure we get the best development for the area that's possible.
These are exactly the concepts that we talked about, that we heard about at the MERS Development Roundtable. And I think our Larry Beasley spoke a lot about corridor shore and how, you know, this is our, as if it's really our biggest opportunity to really have a major impact on the livability and the quality of life downtown. And so I commend you for thinking forward and hope we can pick up the other side as well.
Kathy, I got a question on the sites that you're acquiring here. Urban renewal will own those sites then?
Yes.
Then when the developers come in, they'll have to do an RFP for what their kind of development's going?
That's correct.
And that's another way to control the quality.
That's, that's how we control the quality. We issue an RFP for our property and developers respond and we have a selection process to pick what we think is the best development for the area.
But that's only when you acquire the property. That's not what this is doing. This is expanding the boundaries of areas that you can acquire.
Can acquire, right.
Okay. And what were the reasons why that these, the new proposed borders, why wasn't that in the original plan?
You know, I think when we adopted the plan, we really didn't have an understanding, a really clear understanding of how the implementation might go. And there's still debate about that. Will it start at the river and move north? Will it start at the boulevard and move south? Will it start at both ends and move towards the middle? As we've done more research and more planning, we've begun to identify what some of those catalyst development sites are. And, and we believe that the market will support development along the boulevard first. So it was important to get, for example, the east side of the park, the two blocks on the east side of the park in the acquisition area. We're also beginning to hear from property owners who want to work with us or sell us their property or other things like that. And we, you know, they need to be in the acquisition area for us to be able to do that.
Yeah, I just, you know, whenever we start talking about a government entity acquiring land for not a public purpose, it just, it always rubs me the wrong way. I mean, even if it's obtained not through eminent domain or not, it just is, it always sends up a lot of red flags to me, so. That's where most of my questions are, have been originated.
And remember, not all of the acquisition that we do is necessarily for private redevelopment. Some of it is for public projects. So we have helped the city with acquisitions in the past for everything from parking garages to, you know, where the, where the new police headquarters is going to go and the courts building, you know, all of those are on urban renewal property.
Yeah, but I guess the phrases that we've been using today is controlling development and doing those sorts of things, just it, it doesn't send a good message to my brain. I don't particularly like government controlling development in a, in a way of where you have the power to acquire the property. But if you, I think zoning is definitely appropriate. I think, you know, some of the other mechanisms that we have are appropriate, but whenever we start talking about acquiring the property so we can control what gets developed there, it just, just rubs me the wrong way.
I guess I have some of the same concerns. I mean, what you're doing is you're concentrating that decision-making power to a small number of people in an unelected body. It has nothing to do with you, five, 10 years from now, all the personnel could be completely different. It's that you're concentrating all that decision-making power in an unelected body. And some of this, as I look, is, you know, away from public investment. I understand controlling the quality around the park, but we're talking about development around the boulevard as far west as Chertel. We're talking about Fields and Santa Fe on the east, far away from the park. I mean, this is, this is not development or land just around large public investments like the park. And so I remain confused about where these, how these boundaries are being drawn. I'm basically being asked to vote, the language says that the inclusion of areas of acquisition is essential to the removal of blight. That's what I'd be voting for today. But I, I can't imagine that if we were to build the boulevard in a way that encouraged development, that I need to vote for this today to get removal of blight around the boulevard from Chertel to Walker. Especially, you know, if we were, if we were able to amend what ODOT came out with last week and maybe get intersections at something like Chertel and Lee, I can't imagine that the private sector wouldn't be able to, that that land would become incredibly valuable. And I can't imagine the private sector wouldn't do quality development along the boulevard, that we would need this resolution today to, to remove blight. But can you, can you help me understand why we need to include the land as far west as Chertel in this resolution today?
Again, it was, it was included because we believe that in order to encourage development on the west side of the convention center and on that west end of downtown, that it was appropriate to include it. And in some cases, it is because we have property owners that are interested in working with us and in others, it's because of the way the plans that we've presented several times about private investment identify catalyst sites in these areas. So, and I would like to point out, you know, So, and I would like to point out, you know, we're, we're adding one, one extra block on the east side of the park. It's only two blocks away from the park. I think that's really a pretty close proximity to the park. And on the, on the lower park, we're adding the block immediately adjacent to the park plus one more park, one more block. I don't, I don't think two blocks is, is a very far distance away from that big investment that the city is making in the downtown, in the new Maps3 Park. So some of the plans that we've completed identify the north four blocks, east of the park and south of the Boulevard is one of the catalyst sites. So, you know, to look at those four blocks as, as one development, obviously the, the substation is in one of those blocks, so it's going to take some time for that change to maybe occur someday. But again, it's a very long-term view of, of how development might happen in the area.
I mean, does it, does it, would you be able to use eminent domain in these, are we increasing the area that you'd be able to use eminent domain in?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, in terms of a long-term view, we had a study in 2010, the ULI study, and it talked about the 50-year view, talked about the enormous potential to influence the city, but it also made very clear that we, in my, in my interpretation, that we're doing this too quickly, that the time isn't now to be spending all your resources acquiring land in this area, that you should develop midtown and, and the other areas first and then move south into Cordishore, that this is, that maybe you're 20, 30 years too early. Do you think that study's now outdated?
I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that we are, we're building different kinds of communities in different parts of downtown, different types of neighborhoods that are going to appeal to different kinds of people. So I think midtown is beginning to, to build out. Deep Deuce is almost entirely built out now, for example. And I, and we are getting quite a bit of development interest south of the Boulevard now. Like you said, yes, the, the private sector may take on a lot of this on its own and, and be fine, but I do think that the city has made such a big investment in this park and a big commitment. And for the park to be successful, we have got to have quality development adjacent to it. And these are some of the tools that we have to use to help make that happen.
Ed, I, I would share this reason as to why it's important that we acquire this land. The most critical developer that comes in is going to be the first one. If that developer has an understanding that the city controls the adjacent area through ownership, they're going to have more confidence and comfort in making that initial development. Then, assuming it's a high-quality one, hopefully that will create additional development to follow. But the first one is the most, is the most difficult one to achieve. And I think their understanding of, of the city's control of the property adjacent to where they may come in gives them greater confidence to make that initial investment.
David, I guess the question I have is, is what James asked before. Why does it have to be, why can't you do that through form-based code? Why can't you do that through zoning? Why can't you say that this is the kind of development we want along the Boulevard and has to conform to these? Why do you have to concentrate all the power in five people or, who are an unelected body? That everybody, everybody who wants to develop has to go to those, to that unelected body? And then you give that unelected body unbridled power to seize land, sometimes from private entities, which they've done in the decades past. They've seized lands from private individuals and they've given it to other private individuals. And sometimes they made an error. And again, it's not Kathy or any of the people that are there today, which we could be talking about five, 10, 15 years from now, when everybody's involved is different. And they might make mistakes, just as in decades past, they made mistakes when they seized land from individuals. They thought that that was the development they wanted, and they made tremendous mistakes when they, when they seized the Criterion Theater, tore it down and built the Century Center. So I, I guess that's the question. Why not have the council use form-based code and say, this is the kind of development we want around the park and the Boulevard?
I think, as Kathy mentioned, ownership creates the highest level of control. And so to gain the highest level of confidence from these developers, they see that ownership as the highest level of control. And so I think they would be more inclined to make that initial investment.
What, what do we think that, you know, if, if we don't approve this expansion of the lines, like what's, what's worst-case scenario? Like what, what do we think is going to, like, I feel like we're doing this to, so we can, you know, I'm, I'm not a micromanager. I don't like sticking my fingers in things. I like letting people that know what they're doing, let, let them do it. And I feel like developers, the free market, know how to do this stuff a lot better than I do, know how to do better than the Urban Renewal Authority knows how to do it, because they're doing it strictly for, to make a profit and to, to benefit the area. So I, I, what is the worst-case scenario of, if, if we don't, if we don't approve this? Because I, because I don't want to, I mean, if, if this is absolutely necessary, then okay, okay, but I just don't see it as something that's really necessary.
I, I think one of the things we're trying to do here is to have the ability to assimilate land if we've got some people that want to sell that land. And so if they want to sell that land, it goes into the urban renewal realm of authority. And they've got processes, and then other people compete on a, on a level field for that land, and they can, it can be an open competitive process to see what can be the best development as opposed to a private deal. Now, private deals are great. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. You get, you know, you get that done and work it in, and then, then the control is through the, the, most likely a PUD that comes forth, which is a form of, of form-based code, not quite, but close to it. And then that's how, how we get to achieve that result. The fact of the matter is that urban renewal is generally funded through the city, and the city doesn't have a lot of money to put in this plant acquisition at this time. So we're not going to go out crazy buying a bunch of land because we don't have the resources to do that. However, this broadens our area of ability. If you've got somebody that's got some property, they don't really know what to do with it, we can get that into the urban renewal hands and begin that process for others that may be adjacent or want to come in and do a, a bigger development, to come back in through that urban renewal process that maybe has had some problems 30 years ago, but recently has had some pretty good successes and what they've been able to achieve.
This is also funded, can be funded through TIF funds, right? We've used TIF funds in the last five years to acquire land.
Well, and that's what I was going to point out, but those TIF funds are allocated by the city council. They're not allocated by the Urban Renewal Authority. So if there is any additional allocation of funds for acquisition, it would have to come to this city council to be approved before it came to the Urban Renewal Authority. The other thing I, I think we have to say is that this area is not in an increment area. It is not in a tax increment financing area. It is a part of the project plan for the downtown TIF. But at some point in the future, I think one of the things that we have to look at is whether or not it makes sense to create a new TIF district for this area. Again, that TIF district would be controlled by the city manager and the city council, and allocations of funds to projects, I mean, Jim's making a face, but they, you have to designate a public official in the plan, and it's usually the city manager. But anyway, you know, those allocations of funds would come from the city council. They don't come from the Urban Renewal Authority. We are carrying out the wishes of the city council and not acting independently. The other thing I, I want to say about development, and development in this area and throughout downtown, is that one of the ways that we can help make development happen is by having sites. And instead of providing development assistance to some of the projects like we're doing in downtown right now, we can provide land. And that that takes the form of a subsidy. We, you know, we sell it for fair value. We can write down the value for the reuse requirements that we put on it. But again, that's another way of incentivizing development and getting what you want. And I, I believe that, and I get a lot of calls about this, is that developers look for land and look for the accumulation of sites in order to make things happen. Part of the challenge in Cordishore is, as the mayor pointed out, how many individual parcels there are and how many individual owners there are. And, and the assimilation of property into large enough sites that can make development happen that's supportable in the market is very difficult to do.
Well, I mean, I think I'm, I'm going to end up voting against this, but not because I think it's evil or there's some plot or whatever, that it's a complete government overreach. But I think it's, I think it probably stems mainly from the fact that there's a lot of things that we do that come, get on our agenda, and I, and I'm like, well, okay, that was the plan that was set four or five years ago, and that's what it was meant to do. And so I, I just go along with it. But I, I see this as changing the plan. This is one of those beginning stages of where the council's actually making, making a decision to, to go further and go, go further. So I, I think that's pretty much the basis. I think, I think how the, the boundaries are set right now are fine. And I think that the, I probably trust the market too much to, to, to do the right thing. It usually just happens a little slower than what we want it to, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yeah?
I have a question. Is it possible to, to grant the urban renewal, the authority to acquire voluntarily, voluntarily acquire properties, ongoing transactions without giving the power to eminent domain? Do the two things have to be?
I don't know the answer to that right now. I'd need to talk to Dan about it, probably, but I, I can't give you a definite answer.
I think that is possible.
But, you know, if our goal is to facilitate people that are trying to sell it, it seems to me that there's very little, very little reason not to do it that way.
Pete, one of the problems is you will have speculators coming in in gaps to take advantage of that. And sometimes I think you need that ability to force a sale to...
But they're already, speculators are already there.
I understand. It's not going to get any better. And sometimes you have to be able to force a particular sale to acquire a significant amount of property.
But what I'm hearing is, is that the, the primary thrust is to facilitate people that voluntarily want to sell their property. And if that's the case, we could do that without, we don't have to do both steps at the same time. We don't have to have the, a maybe.
I'm all for that voluntary sale, but I'm saying there, there may be times when, when we have to go beyond that.
I think there can be cases when we would own everything in a block that is desired for redevelopment except one parcel, and that owner would not want to sell. And in those cases, those are the cases where we would use eminent domain to acquire that parcel, so that we could complete a site, like a complete block for redevelopment.
No, I, I understand that. But, you know, we, we can talk about how wonderful success we've had in the last five, six years. That, that belies the historical significance of the fact that we tore down downtown Oklahoma City 50, 40 years ago, and it's only been the last four or five years that we've had any real significant success in doing anything about it. So the idea that we just, we're, we're the, we have some ability to see the future. When you talk about the long-term future, urban renewal history is, it's very long-term, very long-term.
Well, but I mean, I'd like to say that I think, I think this area is extremely different than downtown of 30 or 40 years ago. There, there are very, very few structures of any significance left in the area. The area is very blighted. I mean, we, we had a blight study that you all approved and adopted and declared the area blighted, that had examples after examples of, of properties that are dilapidated, abandoned, code enforcement problems, and that is still mostly the case for the area. You know, I, I think we're looking at something very different than what urban renewal dealt with 40 years ago. And plus, you know, I mean, Councilman Pettis said it a few years ago, a few weeks ago, I'd like to think that urban renewal today is not the urban renewal of, of 40 years ago.
And Kathy, I really want to echo those comments. I mean, there are not significant structures down there. Most of this is vacant land or abandoned properties. It, it is so different.
But don't we have adequate laws to do something about that now? I mean, if, if, if it just is to alleviate this blight, I mean, we've got code enforcement, we, we've got all kinds of ways to do something about it.
But, but sometimes, and all due respect, it's only so much, so, so much that code enforcement can do. Because I'm, for example, I'm dealing with a, a area in Ward 7 where code enforcement has been out there almost every single day, but yet you still have some of the same issues. So sometimes in extreme cases, I think you do need to have that, that power force eminent domain.
So now we're thinking we should extend the power of eminent domain to somebody who doesn't mow their yard regularly?
No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that...
That's what, that's a logical conclusion of that.
No, I'm, I'm just using as a...
If it's code enforcement to do it, you take the property away from them.
Yeah, let's get a little bit off-topic here.
Well, I mean, the whole point, though, is I just think, I, I kind of agree that it's premature. I think the idea that we're, we're using this power, I, I, Kathy, I, I probably, I agree with it, that, that the urban renewal today is not the urban renewal of the 60s. I, I realize that. But having lived through that horror story, that it was in the 60s, it seems to me we need to be very careful, very careful, that we don't make those same mistakes again.
Absolutely.
I mean, we, when I was on the council 30 years ago, our, our, our whole focus was, what are we going to do about the problem that was created 20 years before we got there? What are we going to do about downtown? And here we are now, 30 years later, finally coming to a conclusion. I don't want to repeat that mistake.
And we're still dealing with some of that in other parts of Oklahoma City. Maybe not so much downtown, but it's still a part of what we deal with.
So my, my skepticism about this is healthy. It's based on 75 years of living in Oklahoma City and understanding that we haven't always done it right. And I want to be sure we do it right when we do it this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the item.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. Pass is six-three. We're on to item 8A. I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
All right.
Do we need to approve the resolution? Yes. Move the resolution?
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is another situation where we do not need executive session.
Move the resolution?
All right. Cast your votes. Resolution passes unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session.
Do not.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8O, the city manager would like to discuss with council and executive session some updates on this matter. So how about a motion to move that one into executive session?
Move the item into executive session?
Cast your votes, and it moves into executive session. Item 8P, I understand we do need executive session.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want a motion to move that one into executive session.
Move the item into executive session?
Cast your votes. That item moves into executive session. Item 8Q is claims recommended for denial. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Marjorie Erwin. Good morning, Marjorie. We'll, we'll let you name an address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm Marjorie Erwin, and address is 2825 Northwest 117th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Okay. And you, you live in Ward 2. Could you tell us a little bit about your claim?
Yes, um, I got the denial letter, and I wasn't pleased because apparently they went to the side, as they said.
Yeah, well, pretend I don't know anything about this.
Oh, okay. Can I tell you?
Yeah, just tell me, tell me what happened.
Okay. On January 2nd, I was headed southbound on May Avenue and approaching the I-44 crossover bridge in the right-hand lane. And the speed limit is 40. And I happened to get close to the intersection, and I said, I better slow a little bit so in case, you know, the light changed on me. And I went down in this cement sinkhole. It's a cement hill. It actually is smooth, don't get me wrong, but I have a Cadillac Deville. It's low to the ground. It's a 2004 model. And I went in it, it slammed down like that, you know, and the air shocks blew, both of them. And so it's a city street, and it was damaged by that. And so I turned in the claim. But they're saying negligence and different things is, is their opinion for the denial, and I don't feel that way. I have, I, I am retired from the Oklahoma City Police Department, and I was the 911 dispatcher. from the Oklahoma City Police Department, and I was the nine-one-one dispatcher. And believe me, I would not turn any false claim that I didn't think was proper.
Basically, you're thinking through the deterioration of the street caused your car to suffer some damage?
That sinkhole has, has gotten so deep, it's away from the bridge. It's not level at all. So everybody that goes on there goes through a dip. Now, if you got a SUV, those monster trucks, it won't bother it. It's perfect.
Right.
But a low-riding car? No.
Okay. Let me get some advice from our legal staff here. Tina, what can you tell us from the city's perspective?
Well, first of all, we don't have any notice prior to this incident that there was any problem with the street there. When we went out to check the area and drove through the same area, there's, there's nothing that could really be a sinkhole there. There's a seam where the bridge has got an expansion joint, but there's, there, we don't have a bunch of claims for this area. And when our staff drove through there at the speed limit, there was no damage, no real impact. So it sounds like a freaky little deal here, but it's not, we don't have any notice of that, and we weren't able to recreate that situation when we went out there.
I'll be happy to take you in my car.
Well, there are, there are times when council has discretion to deal with, with claims like this, and times we do not have discretion because of state law. Which category does this fall into?
We need to have prior notice of a problem with the street there, and we've got nothing. So this would be a no discretion.
Okay. So what she's telling me is that state law prohibits a municipality from paying a claim unless we've had prior notice. And in this case, there was no prior notice. Therefore, the council and I would be breaking the law if we paid the claim. Does that, does that resonate with you, or is that similar to what you've been told?
I understand that that's what you want to do.
Okay.
You're not going to pay.
Well, we can't pay legally. That's, that's our situation.
What statute is that?
You know, and, and there's no question, we feel some level of sympathy for you, and we've all been in a situation where a deteriorating road, you know, caused some havoc, or perhaps almost a wreck, or, you know, who amongst us has not been in that situation? But the council does not have the discretion to pay the claim. That's the problem in this case.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak under any item listed under eight Q? All right. How about a motion then?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item nine. These are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item nine? All right. How about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item ten is items from council. And we'll start with an ordinance that was introduced by council members Sayer, Shadid, and White. Meg, you kind of took the lead on this particular aspect.
I'd be delighted to have somebody else speak on this subject today.
We do have one person that's signed up to speak, just so you'll know.
Good. Okay. Maybe we should, well, let me just comment here that we did make a small change at the last meeting, and we've added a provision that requires that the outdoor roaming area be enclosed in order to protect the chickens from any possible predators, and equally to protect neighbors from chickens wandering out of their yard. So that addition has been made. Otherwise, the ordinance stands as, or the changes stand as we have discussed both at the introduction and at the public hearing. So I guess why don't we have the individual come up and speak?
Okay. Debbie Bohannon?
And if I can just ask for, the enclosure can include just the fence around the backyard. Is that-
But it doesn't have to have a top on it?
So it doesn't have to have a top on it?
I thought, I think it has to, does it have to have a top? I mean, chickens can fly.
Let me find the amendment.
I don't remember. It does have to be enclosed.
I'm Debbie Bohannon, 1920 Northwest 31st. I guess I'm the only Tea Party conservative in Dr. Shadid's district, so I'm here to defend the chickens as a lawbreaker because I own one. Yes, they can, if you clip a chick's wings when they're young, they won't hop the fence. They learn early. I started out with twelve, and one turned out to be a boy, so my neighbors busted me when he woke him up at six in the mornings. But I heard so much disinformation on the, you know, when the subject came up, that's why I came today, was kind of set some things straight about them. And I think it was a real estate agent last week had mentioned how filthy they are. Quite the contrary, I had a standard fiddle about so big that suffered, just suffered every year in the summer with chicks and fleas with their thick fur. And the chickens solved that problem. And now my neighborhood is, I've got one of the few locations in, in our entire neighborhood that is a flea and tick-free zone, thanks to my little chicken. She's a pet. She comes and sits, sits on my lap, eats out of my hand. And it's either that or 5,000 wild birds in there, but they're very clean. And I was stricken when I went to Hawaii a few years ago, that they roam free in Hawaii. They're beautiful. And of course, I'm not saying we should have piglets, but they have piglets roaming through, too. That's because the hurricanes boost everything. No, anyway, they, they really are clean for the personal owner. They provide a benefit of a healthy, happy egg. And it just, your enclosure doesn't have to be anything, anything significant. I have a chain-linked fence, and I clip their wings, like I say, so they don't hop over the fence.
Right.
So maybe not, I'm not ready to put on overalls and put a stick of hay in my mouth and be a farmer. But I really enjoy my chicken. They're clean, they're healthy. And if the neighborhoods have a problem with it, we've got a neighborhood association where we live. There's homeowners associations that can make policies that restrict that if they want to. But, you know, it's just a matter of freedom. And it's a beneficial thing. So I encourage you to let me keep my chicken home.
Thanks very much.
Sure.
Well, Meg, one of the questions I had was if, I, I get a random email now and then from someone on this issue who will say that if they live, they don't want to live next door to a person where suddenly a bunch of chickens just show up. And, and could you address that, that concern?
I can, thank you very much. And I've had an awful lot of emails about this, too. And I continue to say, the ones I get are split. Fifty-fifty people very much in favor of it, and other people not in favor of it. So this particular ordinance tried to address that by creating a process that the neighbors have input.
So they would get notified?
They will be notified, just like any other zoning issue. You know, if you want to add a third story onto your house, you'd have to go before the Board of Adjustment. Your neighbors are notified, and they have an opportunity to weigh in. This would be the same process. You're going to fill out an application. We created a $25 fee for the permit. Your neighbors within 300 feet will be notified, and they have the opportunity. If they feel so strongly about it, they can write a letter. They don't have to go to the Board of Adjustment. So, you know, it doesn't take time away, but they could write a letter in protest. And the board will operate just the way it does on any other case, and listen to the facts and make a decision.
Okay.
This was, I think, the best run at a compromise for letting people have them in those neighborhoods where people seem to be supportive of them, but provide individual homeowners the right to say, I don't want to live next door to chickens, which I've heard quite a bit.
Right. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the only opposition I come into is people misunderstood their nature of having one of them. And people had questions, and naturally, you don't want, you know, your neighborhood turning into a farm. But it's, most of the people were really misinformed about ownership of them, because they, nothing like, has been presented whatever people who oppose it have presented. It's nothing like that.
Right. Okay, thanks. Yeah, Larry?
How about Ken? Can you answer my question about the top?
Yes. The answer to your question is the outdoor roaming area has to be enclosed to keep the chickens inside the roaming area. So you could have your whole backyard as the roaming area, as long as your fence is sufficient to keep them inside the yard. Not necessarily. But if they could, if they can fly over whatever you're trying to keep them in with, you would have to take some other-
You have to secure the chicken in your yard, yeah.
If we're concerned about the safety of the chickens, which is one of the things, we need to have a top on it, because there are hawks out there who would be delighted to have fresh chicken for dinner.
All right.
Including downtown. I have a pair of red-tailed hawks.
Well, and I, you know, I, this ordinance changes, that have been suggested meet most of the opposition I have, but apparently it didn't do much for my constituents, because they're still opposed to it by an overwhelming majority. I, the first time around, I got about a fifty-fifty split. But I think there's been some movement to encourage objections to this particular ordinance. So anyway.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have been opposed to this since the beginning because of the input from the neighbors in Ward Three. That input continues to be almost overwhelmingly against this particular ordinance, even with the compromise that was put in there. There are a number of reasons. I'm not going to debate whether, whether, all the cleanliness or aspects of that. Ward Three has, has a number of different kind of neighborhoods in it. It has some neighborhoods that do not have a neighborhood association. In those neighborhoods, I have heard from both sides, people saying, I want them and I don't want them. We have a number of neighborhoods that have non-mandatory volunteer, if you will, homeowners associations. In those associations, every one of them is overwhelmingly against the compromise ordinance. And then we have a number of neighborhoods, newer neighborhoods that have mandatory homeowners associations. And they are relying on the ability to enact restrictions in their neighborhood covenants to prohibit chickens should this particular thing go through. The problem there is, correct me if I'm wrong, Kenny, that the city cannot adjudicate a covenant violation. That is strictly up to the neighbors to take that through the process and take legal action on their own. We don't enter into that.
Correct.
And so based on that, the neighbors not wanting chickens and thinking that the covenant will be a way out, I would warn them that this has got some problems with it. So therefore, I'm going to vote against it. And the other overriding thing that I think is going to enter into this, and I hope if this passes, this is wrong, but I can see neighbor A getting out of sorts with neighbor B over chickens. And I don't think that's something that I want to promote. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Yeah, Ed?
Let me just point out, just, Lash, I promise that you're not the only one practicing civil disobedience in Ward Two or throughout the city. I mean, there's literally thousands of people who are, have chickens already with less than an acre. And what I just want to make clear, because just based on something you said, I mean, what, if we pass this today, it won't make it legal to have chickens. You have to then go through the process and make the application, and then, and then it becomes legal. But this today wouldn't necess, everyone doesn't just get grandfathered in. There's now a process to, okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, for the last several months, I've been hearing from different neighborhood associations about this subject, and the majority of them are against us doing anything related to chickens. But I do have women in ag here who are here in support of chickens. So I'm definitely hearing it from both sides. But I just wanted to recognize you all. But I have been hearing it again from, from both sides. But the neighborhood associations have been strongly against this. But I do recognize that I have people on the South Side who already have chicken. So this particular vote will be a hard one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, the response that I've received in Ward Five is, is strongly against this proposal. So I will vote against it. And I do want to confirm Councilman Shadid's comment that people currently are, are raising chickens without the proper authorization. And in fact, I've been attending some meetings at Rancho Village Elementary School, and not only do they have chickens, but they, I get greeted by a rooster from somewhere in the neighborhood every time I go over there. So I just think our code enforcement would, would have a difficult time enforcing these rules. And I just think it's going to complicate things. Thank you.
All right. We have one more person who has passed a note up front. Jessica Thompson? Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Jessica Thompson, 1414 Northwest 14th Street. I live in Meg's Ward, and I originally did not come here, oh, did I just, oh. I originally did not come here to talk about chickens, but I saw it on there. I got really excited again. I just wanted to say that I think there is a lot of, no offense to the people that oppose it, but I think there's a lot of ignorance to the chicken matter. I think a lot of people are uninformed and uneducated. And I really want to say thank you to Meg for talking to people and listening. And I think in regards to David's comment about a rooster saying hello to you when you visit, according to this plan here, there would be no roosters. So I think that, that would address that there.
Well, I don't think there's a, roosters allowed currently.
Correct.
But that still exists is my point.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I, according to this, there would be no roosters, only chickens. And someone did mention, this lady here, I am a Realtor, and I have a lot of buyers that are actually interested in chickens. And I, not going to lie, I do have chickens. I have three now. And yes, it is illegal, but I do give eggs to my neighbors. I have had no issues with my neighbors. So I do think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
I think we need to move the amendment on this before we vote on it.
The amendment has to be voted on first. Any other discussion from council? All right. Let's have a motion on the amendment, then.
I'll move the amendment.
All right. We're voting on item 10A1. Cast your votes. The amendment passes six to three. How about a motion then on item 10A2, which is the ordinance to put this into effect?
I'll move the ordinance.
All right. Cast your votes. And it also passes, no, it doesn't. It fails. The item fails. Four to five.
That's it.
All right. Items from council. Pat?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On yesterday, we had the great opportunity to attend the GE Research Center groundbreaking service. That was an excellent event, and we are definitely glad that GE decided to bring their research center to Oklahoma City, whether especially Ward Seven. I just want to again thank the council for your support as it relates to the Northeast Renaissance movement. The community is definitely excited. For the past several months, we've been having community meetings and focus groups to deal and to talk with the Northeast Renaissance. And also with that, I would actually like to thank The Oklahoman for covering the story of the Northeast Renaissance. They have provided a, a true outlet to get the news out about the Northeast Renaissance. And matter of fact, Friday, they did an editorial about the Northeast Renaissance and what we are trying to do to bring about economic development in Oklahoma City. Also, I would like to thank Russell Perry and Kevin Perry and the Black Chronicle and the Perry Broadcasting and Communications.
All right. Meg? All right. David? Pete?
The, just to comment on the railroad situation, the, the decision by ODOT was kind of good news and bad news. The bad news is they sold the rail line, but the good news is they sold it to somebody that's interested in, in developing it more along the lines of what Oklahoma City has been interested in with regard to transit. I think the purchaser of that line is going to be very interested in trying to make rail transportation viable effect in the fairly short run. And I'd like to see us reach out to them as soon as possible to try to work out some details, because the, as we, they discovered when they brought that experimental kind of tour-type train into Oklahoma City, they can't get all the way into the city. They had to stop in Midwest City or someplace. And so there, obviously there's rail there that could use, utilize, and we'd get after it and figure out a way to get them on that rail line. I think the people that actually own that, some of that rail line, may not be interested at all in, in passenger or transportation. And so the possibility exists that that rail line could be dug up if we don't do something about it. So I'd like to see us initiate contact with the, with the successful bidder as soon as possible to try to see what needs to be done, to try to preserve the lines that will make it possible to get into, closer to the downtown area. I think without much trouble, those passenger trains that they talk about could be brought fairly close to the area where ACOG is in Bricktown, just north of there. There's rail, there's rail accessibility there. That'd be much- That'd be much better than having the line be from what, Bristow, to Midwest City as opposed to Tulsa to Oklahoma City.
I'd be happy to set up, send some meeting, reach out to them, and see what we need to help accommodate...
And when we were looking at MAPS Three on the tree car project, Pete and I talked about some of that money being spent to improve or acquire that Midwest City-Oklahoma City line. And so, it's not a new idea. It's not something where you hadn't talked about funding through the MAPS Three program. But the tree cars cost more than I think...
You are correct. We actually put in a Tiger application at one point in time to get a passenger rail. We're going to match that with MAPS Three dollars on a passenger rail or some type of commuter rail connection from Tinkerton Air Force Base into Oklahoma City.
Yeah. So just whatever we can do to try to keep the momentum going. Because I think that was a, for the ODOT to sell it to somebody that appears to have an interest, and it may not be the kind of passenger rail we'd like to see, some high-speed route, you know, 40 minutes between here and Tulsa on a train. But the fact is, they're interested in pursuing that. And they're interested in pursuing it on their nickel as opposed to some highly subsidized way of doing it. I think we'd be remiss not to really try to take advantage of that as quickly as we possibly could.
Mayor, there was something I forgot to mention, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And when we were at the groundbreaking yesterday, we had the opportunity to hear the train again as the CEO was trying to speak. And so, I wondered if the city manager might give us an update on the quiet zone.
The train was awfully loud. We would be happy to do that. I'll get with Eric and we'll get...
I think that my understanding is the plans are complete and that we're ready to get going. So if you wouldn't mind just reporting back on that, I'd appreciate it.
Be pleased to do so.
All right. Larry?
Ed? I wonder if there's some way in the next, I'm not sure exactly what the deadline is, the next 90 days for the council and staff to look at the Boulevard issue one more time. You can debate whatever side you want on the Boulevard. I think that there's pretty large consensus that the meeting last week at the convention center at the same time as the Thunder playoff game was probably inadequate, not probably completely inadequate in terms of warning, notice to those, the timing, the presentation. We've had, I brought the mayor of Milwaukee here. We have more than 300 people. We had two ODOT meetings that were televised over the Internet, hundreds of people. I'm not sure why the format changed on this one. I suspect that it's to minimize dissent or that kind of deliberation. And so, I thought that we could have done better in terms of emailing the hundreds of people who've attended those meetings and expressed interest in that topic, kind of letting them know that there's going to be a meeting, putting it in a place that's convenient to get to, not during a Thunder playoff game. And so, certainly, that process could have been better. And so, maybe there's a public forum that we could do as a city, a workshop, since we're going to every other week, meetings. It's such an important decision. Maybe that was a surprise how that was formatted. But it shouldn't be a surprise, the conclusion that they came up with, because 18 months ago, in January of 2013, we voted seven to two to endorse the STANTEC recommendation, which is basically what ODOT gave us last week, more or less. So I guess the question is, do we still, but they continue to say that they want to do what the city wants. So I guess the question is, do we still, as a body, embrace that recommendation, the STANTEC recommendations? Because a couple of things have transpired in the last 18 months that maybe would warrant looking at it. A, you have two new council members. Of the seven to two vote, two are no longer on the council. You have two new council members, and you haven't had a forum with the council with the two new council members. B, we have a lot of empirical evidence now about how this is working on the west side. You have the ramp comes in. And my anecdotal experience is that, and I'll admit, both for myself and everyone driving around me, it's very difficult to come in at 45 miles an hour. It seems like it's easy to go over 45 miles an hour, and everybody else is doing the same or far exceeding the speed limit. And I think people would continue to do that as long as it allows, until they're made to stop. You're just going to keep flying into downtown until you hit the first intersection. So where that first intersection is really determines the behavior, when it stops and it goes down a grade, and when you might have development come around. Do, the recommendation from ODOT last week really didn't have intersections until, you know, the middle of downtown. Maybe something like Chertel and Lee, there's intersections, which moves that, slowing the traffic down. I just know from my experience, I'm just going to keep coming in quickly, and everyone around me seems to keep coming in quickly until you have that first intersection. So just maybe checking back in with the council and see where we are as a body to give that final feedback to ODOT before they make their final recommendation.
So if the council has new thoughts on the idea, they want to pass one to the city manager, and then they can take it under advisement?
We'd be happy to do that. ODOT's obviously been following the resolution that we passed, as you mentioned, of January of 13. There will be, I think there's a couple of things here. As far as input into parking, tree wells, the whole final design, I think right now we're focusing more on the bigger picture as to the different segments, and, you know, Long Bridge, Short Bridge, you know, the whole thing. And I think they're taking our recommendation, going forward with it at that point in time, and that's the recommendation. The Lee-Chertel question is clearly something that's still, I think, available for discussion. I really think that that's out there. And again, you know, it's interesting. Medians in, medians out, how big the medians are, the size of the trees, types of the trees, left turn lanes. I think there's a lot of discussion that yet to be had on that. And I do want to point out that the vision for downtown is some type of variation of what was done on Reno. Reno has two 11-foot lanes each way. It has parking on both sides. It has a median. The width of the median, whether it's, you know, it's six feet, whether it's 20 feet, whether there's no median, I think that kind of stuff's still in discussion. Bike lanes clearly is something that we can get into the discussion aspect of. You know, some people don't think they need parking in front of the park, you know, whether or not we've got a median in front of the park, or some of those things are discussed. And that's still all on the table as we go forward. But I think what we really want to focus on the vision is, if you take a look at Reno, and I was at the meeting, I saw there, you know, I had some people telling me that how ugly Reno is, you know, and that we don't want cars downtown. Well, you know, that's kind of an outside far, I don't think that's, most people believe that. Most people want to have an attractive Boulevard that's functional, that's bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, gets traffic in and out of downtown, and is an asset to the overall growth of downtown Oklahoma City. I think that's the goal. There's a lot of different ways to get there, and we're in some of the aesthetics. But as far as getting back to the council and meeting and discussing some of those type of issues, I don't think there's any problem with that at all.
If I may just say, since you raised the question, has anybody on council's thoughts have changed since we had that presentation or discussion back in January? Mine has, and that west bypass, I am really pleased with it. I think Ed's comments are spot on, though. You're just naturally driving at a higher rate of speed than what we would want in the downtown area on that ramp. But it's a great addition, the concept of having, I'm not suggesting this, but two roads instead of one, like one going from the east to the west, because that's the way you currently have to access that west bypass now. Going west, you access it from Main Street, I guess. And then going from the west to the east, you get onto Reno from it. So the concept of having two streets to accommodate a quote Boulevard is something that somebody may want to look into. I'm not proposing it. But now that we have this west bypass, and I'm using it so much, I wouldn't mind it being similar to Reno Avenue, this Boulevard, with the stoplights to help slow us down. But also, I think if somebody is wanting to veer off I-40 because they've never been to Oklahoma City, the fact that they may be delayed 10 minutes by driving through Oklahoma City is not going to be a problem. In fact, maybe if they got off onto the Boulevard, it would encourage them to stay longer. And if we had it to where they're going too fast, they may miss that opportunity to really get to know Oklahoma City. So I think my perspective has changed since January of 13, as we've now been able to access this west bypass. And I'd be all for looking into it from a different perspective. I don't have any problems with the way ODOT has worked on this and provided for alternatives. I just unfortunately, due to some conflicts, wasn't able to attend that meeting. But anyway...
John? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we do need to take another look, take another look at it.
But at some time, we're going to have to stop looking and start building. And, you know, we can look at it and suggest alternate routes till the world looks level. But we've got to build this thing somehow sometime and say, okay, we may have some good ideas coming forward later on, but we've got to build the Boulevard the way it is. I've done a number of projects. At some point in time, you've got to stop comments and start building.
Well, what I think Jim said about what people want, I think, is right on. I think that they want a nice Boulevard that gets traffic in and out, that's pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly.
We're asking a lot of this street.
I know. That's a lot. That's a lot. But that is, so there has to be some sort of merging of all that.
Good word, merging on traffic as yet.
I agree with Pat. Coming from a computer world, there always is, everybody's got another ID at the last minute. There has to be a time when you have a system freeze and you get on with it. I think the Boulevard, the way it's currently designed, does meet the goals and objections that we set forth on there. ODOT has done their work, and I think it's time to get off and get on with building it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments from council?
I had, on next Monday, May 19th, we'll have a meeting at 6:30 about the update on the Safe Oklahoma Grant with the police department. And it'll be at Council Grove Elementary. It's just updating on those boundaries of Northwest 27th on the north, Melrose Lane on the south, Meridian on the east, and Council on the west. And so, if you live, work, or own property within that corridor or around that corridor, I highly recommend you come in. It's at Council Grove Elementary at 6:30. Thanks.
All right. And on the city manager reports?
T.O. Bowman is here this morning, and I think he's going to introduce Georgie.
Good morning. T.O. Bowman with the Sustainability Office. This is the second year of the Neighbor Walk program, and I'll have...
Madeline?
I think we skated. That gets out. So we conducted a pilot last year. Essentially, we go into three fifth-grade classrooms in Oklahoma City public schools and teach walkability curriculum. They learn about civic, local government. And it's been really beneficial, and the feedback has just been extraordinary. So we do have a report, a full report, that'll be coming out in about two weeks or so. And once that's ready, then all council will receive that. So Georgie Raska is going to give an overview of the program.
Thank you, T.O. I am so excited to be here today to talk to you about something non-controversial in neighborhoods. It's nothing to do with eminent domain or backyard chickens, but it has to do with fifth graders loving their neighborhoods and teaching us a lot about being community. Neighbor Walks is a unique program that was created by Oklahoma City residents, and it's being done in Oklahoma City neighborhoods. About three years ago, the Neighborhood Alliance and Neighborhood Housing Services sent eight Oklahoma City neighborhood leaders to Florida for a conference, a Neighbor Works conference. And at that conference, we were challenged to come up with a community-building activity that would feature some of our councils, city councils' priorities. Our group that went, and one of the group members is here with us tonight, Jessica Thompson, also went on that conference with me and six others, we came up with the Neighbor Walks concept. And what that is, is basically where we go in for two days into a classroom, work with fifth graders, and allow them to help us figure out what would make their neighborhood more walkable. If you want to know what's going on in a neighborhood, ask a fifth grader. They know what's happening on every street in their entire neighborhood. That's where the goal of Neighbor Walks was. It was quite simple. It was to get with those classrooms and to kind of figure out what some of the problems were in helping them make their neighborhood safer. The planning, however, was very, very intense. Again, we're working with public schools, and permissions needed to be done. We brought together a team of wonderful people, including the OU College of Architecture and the OU School of Public Health. They developed a two-day curriculum for us to use in these classrooms, and they did surveys. The Oklahoma Office of Sustainability with both T.O. and Madeline, who are absolutely superb and two of the best that you have in the city, they took the lead on the program, provided the limited funds that it took to put the project on. Neighborhood Alliance helped choose the local sites, the schools, as well as recruit the over 30 community volunteers that it took to put the project together, including over 30 of the 30 volunteers from Target stores alone that came out to help. Oklahoma City Public School Systems did background checks on all of the volunteers that were coming in. The planning department trained and sent about 10 of their employees to help teach the curriculum. The Oklahoma City Police Department sent four police officers, each one of them equipped with a radar gun, so the kids could work with those. Other volunteers came from ACOG, the MAPS Three Trails and Sidewalk Subcommittee, the Fire Department, and parents and neighbors of the local schools. Knowing that neighborhood revitalization and development of sidewalks go hand in hand and are both priorities of you as council, the concept of Neighbor Walks was very simple. In 2011, as I told you, we sent a group to Florida. They came back with the concept. We sat down with volunteers last year, including Madeline and some of the people from the Office of Sustainability, put on the pilot program, and this year, we were ready to bring it out full force into three neighborhoods. Those three areas that we chose were in, all three were in low-income neighborhoods. Two of them were Strong Neighborhood Initiative, or SNI neighborhoods, and one of them was on the I-240 corridor. Those three schools, one was in Ward Six, Meg Salier's Eugene Fields, the principal there and their students. We had 27 students in that school. In Ward Seven, John Pettis's FD Moon, the principal and teachers, had 26 students involved. And in Ward Four, Pete White's beloved Hayes Elementary School, their teacher and principals had 69 students involved in the program at that school. I know that all of you advocate strongly for your local schools, but I just have to take a moment to say I've never seen anybody advocate quite as heavily for a school in their ward as I've seen Pete White. And he was there on both days as well as for this project, and it was very commendable. A lot of things were learned in this project. At Eugene Fields, Angela, a fifth grader who's confined to a wheelchair, said that even though she lives in a neighborhood with class in Tin Pin that has a local park, she never could really utilize the park because she never could find a smooth enough sidewalk to get to the local park. So she was partnered that day on her walk with Priscilla, a local neighborhood mom that lives in the neighborhood that volunteered that day. And Priscilla took it upon herself to help Angela find a route from her home to the local park. And since then, Priscilla has reported that she's seen Angela several times in the neighborhood, out and about on sidewalks and going back and forth to McKinley Park, her neighborhood park. They've even, Priscilla said she's even gone over to Angela's house and with her parents' permission, has taken Angela to the park now. At FD Moon, the principal had to sub for one of his students, so he actually was involved in the classroom part of the activity. And then he actually went and took the kids out on some of the surveys that they did in their local neighborhood of what is walkable and what isn't. He said that he saw parts of his neighborhood that he didn't even know existed, and he was really pleased to be part of it. At Hayes Elementary, David was using the radar gun on his walk, and he actually caught his own mother speeding around his neighborhood school. So he was quite the celebrity for the day that he was able to tell people that he caught his own mom. Our takeaways from this program are huge. The kids learned about neighborhoods. They learned about safety. They learned about how local governments work. They learned what city council is. They learned what planning departments are. They also learned that civic pride begins with them. They learned that if you steal from Target, you will get caught. They learned that you can walk and bike to school with some minor and in some cases, major changes in your neighborhood. And they learned how they themselves and their families and their neighborhoods can help make some of those changes and want changes, they have to turn over to their city because they're just too big for they themselves to do. The volunteers learned how smart and energetic the fifth graders are. They were absolutely amazing. They saw three Oklahoma City neighborhoods up close and personal that they may never have seen before. And you as council, I think hopefully what you... And you as council, I think hopefully what you'll take away is that even our smallest citizens, our fifth graders, totally agree with you on two of your major priorities for the city, and that is more sidewalks and safer revitalized neighborhoods. They were right on target with what your targets are as well. At Hayes Elementary, we also hope that David learned that if you catch your mom speeding around the school zone, that you get at least an ice cream cone if she's apologetic for it. But the kids went away with a lot of activities, a lot of excitement. The teachers were thrilled with the curriculum and the way the whole process worked, and we were very excited to take this program to those three schools. We're looking forward to bringing them to three more schools next year, so if any of you have any schools in your district that you feel like fit the criteria and you would like for us to bring the Neighbor Walks program to them, please get hold of either Madeline or T.O. They'd be glad to talk to you more about it and make sure that they get put on the list so we can look at them and see if they're interested. We'll be glad, any of us, to take any questions that you might have.
Was there any, are there any further pictures or anything else of the process?
They've been showing pictures on the slide, the screen, and are we gonna send those pictures to them as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. So there will be something that's bigger than this?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you, Georgie. Anybody have a comment? Yeah, Pat?
Have you, Georgie, have you considered taking this outside the Oklahoma School District?
Not at this point, no. I think that leaving it in the Oklahoma City School District is where we're at right now. We've got a really good rapport with them. We've barely touched many of the grade schools, so we've got a lot of grade schools left here that need to utilize the program, I think, before we can expand it.
My ward covers at least two school districts, Oklahoma City and Putnam City. It doesn't cover it, present both of them. And we've got one elementary school in Ward Eight, but in Ward, in the Putnam City School District, there are several elementary that might be candidates for this, and I'd love to see the idea of neighborhoods being framed.
And I think what we would love to do is to take the curriculum and make it where it's available to any school and any volunteer group that wants to do it. What OU created for the classrooms was wonderful, what T.O. and Madeline have done with it of that. It makes it very easy to package it and allow other groups to use it if they want to.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, Georgie, thank you for your involvement in this.
Thank you.
All right, item B is the Bus Shelter and Bus Bench Advertising Revenue Survey Summary.
And Jason's here to answer any questions regarding that, and then we have the March Quarterly Investment Report.
All right, are there any questions or comments on the, is this next?
Citizens.
Okay.
Yeah, is there a presentation, or are we just?
No, Jason, Jason come up and answer any questions.
Oh, yeah. Well, A, I just appreciate having this included. I mean, we've been talking about it for a few years, and I just really appreciate the work, the survey. I know that you didn't get a lot of other transit agencies to respond, so you have to kind of take it with a grain of salt, but I just appreciate the effort. And I think it's incredibly important because unlike most of the transit agencies that you interviewed, we don't have a dedicated funding source. We don't have evening or Sunday bus service, and we're scrambling for dollars in a way that maybe they're not. So it's a little bit different, but I just appreciate whoever took the effort to call people. I do notice that even though you only got seventeen people to answer you, the majority of transit agencies, seventy-one percent, own their own shelters. The majority of transit agencies, sixty-seven percent, own their own bus benches.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
I noticed that in Tulsa, which would probably be the closest comparison, since they have also have similar, they own their benches and shelters and have about fifty-five percent of revenue go to the agency.
Right, which is consistent with our agreement also, for the shelters we own.
For benches, they get fifty-five percent, and we get ten percent.
Ten, and we do not own the shelters. I mean, the benches.
Benches, and up until now, we've got zero percent.
That is correct.
Okay.
Up until this recent agreement, we did not receive anything from bus shelters, uh, bus benches.
Some of the, I'm having trouble with some of the math on the pro forma on the back. There's eleven, there's more than eleven hundred bus benches out there, right? And we are estimating that if we get ten percent of the revenue, that'll bring us ninety thousand dollars a year.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Which is about, works out to about sixteen dollars a month per bench. On the existing shelters, we're saying that we have sixty-five of our own?
Those sixty-five are Tyler-owned shelters, where we also get the ten percent. So for estimation purposes, since the revenue share for both Tyler-owned shelters and benches was ten percent, I think you'll find the amount per shelter and bench to be, should be the same, like on a per, per bench or shelter basis.
Okay. But you're, somewhere I'm reading this eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollar number, that if we own the shelter, we're estimating it'll generate eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars in revenue annually?
Yes.
That's maintenance excluded.
That's maintenance excluded, right. That's essentially the amount that Tyler would send us. And again, that's, that's on average. Some shelters, we could perhaps receive no advertising revenue, depending on their location. Other shelters in a high-visibility location may bring in more than that. That's just kind of taking that gross hundred-thousand-dollar amount and calculating kind of an average. But you're right, the eight-forty-seven does not, does not include any maintenance. Tyler's doing all the maintenance and the installation, so that's essentially our net amount to us, or I should say to COTPA.
So your, your conclusion then from this survey of these transit agencies is, is what going forward?
Well, I think, you know, our, our conclusion, and again, just based on this survey, which we just cautioned is really for general information purposes only. I don't know, based on the, the response, that we could say this applies to the industry as a whole, but at least based on our findings so far, I mean, I think we could say that we're in line with what a lot of the other transit agencies are doing in that they own the shelters and, in some cases, benches. They generally rely on some type of advertising company or media, media firm to sell the advertising, and that when you look at the revenue sharing, I think you'll notice it ranges between, I think the numbers are about forty-one to sixty-three percent. We're at about fifty-five percent, so I think we're right in line with at least what we found in other agencies based on this survey.
And that's new because we weren't. The latest changes got us into a better financial position.
Well, that fifty-five percent you're saying is for the ones that we own, but we don't own any. I mean, we, we don't own any of the benches, and we don't own hardly any of the shelters. So yes, we're in that forty to sixty percent for the nominal amount that we own, but we're perhaps still an outlier in that we don't own any of the benches.
Yes, I, I would agree with that in, in that for the ones that we don't own, right, we might be a bit of an outlier, but for the ones that we're committed to owning in the future, the new agreement, I think, is comparable to what we see in the industry. We did ask about bus bench revenue and asked agencies to let us know, you know, what their revenue share was, is if they did not own the benches, and I think we only had one response. That particular agency indicated that they received, I believe it was thirty-five percent revenue share for benches that they do not own, which would be a situation comparable to ours. But again, that's one agency out of the three hundred or so that we asked to participate, so I don't know that that's really a fair gauge. But we did try to come up with a comp on benches not owned, how much revenue sharing should we expect?
So I'm, I'm imagining that the forty, sometimes forty-year-old benches that are out there today are not that expensive from a capital, and that if you replace them with new benches from a capital per bench, it wouldn't be that much. I'm just imagining, I don't know that. But, but here's the question. If, going forward over a ten-year period of time, would you be better as a transit agency, assuming you had the capital, just hypothetically, put that aside, assuming you had the capital or you could borrow it at a low enough interest rate, would you be better off making the capital investment and then having fifty-five percent of the revenue versus allowing another body to own them all and getting ten percent of the revenue for the next ten years?
I mean, I, I really don't know that I can answer that without, you know, I hate to say it, but without some further analysis. And I think we'd say the one thing about that situation that would give me a little bit of concern is just having the, you know, the expertise, the industry knowledge and connections to be able to, to sell advertising. The maintenance would be fine.
I'm not talking about selling directly.
Okay.
I'm talking about, just like the others that own their own infrastructure. They continue to, to, to work with a Tyler, to do all the selling and do the maintenance and all that kind of stuff. It's just that they get fifty-five percent of the revenue because they own this street furniture versus ten percent because Tyler owns the street furniture. So there's, there's no new, there's no selling that we would need expertise. So that's really the question, that I would ask, that, that those in your staff do the pro forma and figure out over ten years, at a time where we're starving for revenue streams, would we be better making the capital investment, owning the eleven hundred bus benches ourselves, and capturing a much higher percentage of the revenue?
Yeah. I mean, we'll be glad to look at, look at that.
That's a fair question. That's a, that's a very fair question. I mean, I, I think the cost of capital is something that we need to take a look at. I think you plug it in, you can find out what the cost of capital's gonna be if you do a reverse calculation on that. I think it's valid, and we'll go get back to you on that.
Thank you.
What about the quarterly investment report?
I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think you have one.
I do. I've been kind of poring through it here.
Any thoughts on why the sales tax was so?
The sales tax, what is that? But the fact of the matter is that our economists recommended, or told us that, that in the, in the last quarter of our, of our fiscal year, in April, May, and June, that we should expect stronger, stronger results, and, and he's been right. I mean, we can attribute it to, you know, healthy economy, the playoffs, you know, the NCAA wrestling tournament brought in, you know, significant dollars. There's been some, some activity in downtown Oklahoma City, some large demands, but I think it's really more a function of the overall stability of the economy.
All right, citizens to be heard. John Brad.
Morning, Mayor, Councilman. Thanks, thank you very much for letting us speak to you this morning. Succinctly, we are here to recommend, strongly recommend, a change to our city's flag. Our current city flag is simple yet complicated. It is a white field with a red border and the seal in the middle. The seal, of course, is representative of the city, but therein lies the problem. A seal is meant to be seen from a distance, not, not, is meant to be seen up close, such as on a water bill or official communication or a police cruiser. It is not meant to be seen on a flag that could be several feet in the air. Thank you very much, ma'am. And certainly does look attractive up close. However, most people see flags, again, from a great distance. And this is why many of the more iconic flags in the world, such as the U.S. flag, the French flag, even the state flag of Oklahoma, are so representative because they are recognized from a distance. There are many city flags in this nation that are very iconic as well. A recent poll taken by, by society that looks at flags surveyed the one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-fifty different flags from the United States. Among the top three were Chicago, Washington, D.C., and St. Louis. And having visited those cities, especially Chicago last summer, I can tell you that that flag is everywhere. It's on coffee mugs, it's on, it's on t-shirts, it's, it flies from private buildings, not just from city and municipal buildings. And in fact, sports teams have even had days where they wear the Chicago flag as a jersey, a representation of it. I've even seen tattoos of the Chicago flag on people. As great as our seal is, I haven't seen that yet on any of our, any of our people here in Oklahoma City, even though we've had legalized tattoos for ten years. And a flag is also supposed to be a shorthand of history. Supposed to have symbols that are instantly recognizable and representative of our past. And since we're at our one-hundred-and-twentieth anniversary as a city, it's something that we have developed a lot of history. And behind me are some of the, some of the flags my class, my Oklahoma History and Geography class have designed, and these students are showing theirs right now.
Why don't we hear from them, if you don't mind?
Certainly, and they can, if you have specific questions for them, they can come up and kind of explain the symbology behind it.
Well, I'd like each of them to explain what they were trying to achieve.
Okay, so come on first.
Well, you need to come to the microphone, and we'll need your name and address for the record. Do you pull the microphone down?
I'm Elizabeth Pope, and I live on five-one-one-nine Eden Drive.
I'm Ashley Herrera. I live in thirty-two-twenty-nine Cashin Place.
Our flag was, the shape of the flag was supposed to represent, like, go back to our state bird, which is a scissor-tail flycatcher, as you can see. The blue field is supposed to go back to our Oklahoma state flag, and then the red represents the red dirt and the blood spilled at the memorial bombing. The black, yeah, the black represents the oil, and then the star or the sun represents that our city was built in the day, and the four points represent the four major crossroads that come, I-40, I-44, I-35, and Route 66.
Okay, thank you. Next.
I'm Shay Hill. I live at five-forty Twentieth Street.
I'm Juliana Lara, and I live on twenty-nine oh-one Southwest Kentucky Avenue. And the blue represents the sky, the red represents the dirt.
And the tree is the survivor tree at the memorial, and I think it represents, like, Oklahoma City being able to survive through, like, tough times, like the bombing and, like, tornadoes and any tragedies that could come.
It's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm Hissou Saldoaco. I live in seven-oh-four Southeast Thirtieth and Lindsay.
I'm Dustin McWilliams. I live at, I live on nineteen-oh-eight Northwest Forty-first Street. And the red fields around the flag represent the red dirt, of course, because red dirt, there's a lot of red dirt here. The black is the oil and the roads. The, the star in the middle with the circle around it represents the Capitol, and the fact that there are blue fields around the star represent that it's the capital of Oklahoma. The sideways, the horizontal line on the crossroad is I-35 and, I-40, and the vertical is I-35. The blue squiggly line, squiggly, it represents the Oklahoma River, and the black squiggly line represents Route 66.
Terrific. All right, next.
My name is Brian Asparza, six-one-three Southwest Seventy-first.
My name is Maline Freeman, and I live on five-hundred West U-Banks. And our flag, the blue represents, like, the Oklahoma state flag and, like, the skies, and then the red represents, like, the red dirt and I guess the blood spilled at the memorial. And then the black represents the oil in our state. And then there's a scissor-tail flycatcher in the middle, like the sculpture out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I never allow my students to do a project without doing it myself, so I styled my own flag. The blue field is, is representative of the state of Oklahoma. The black stripe is for the foundation of Route 66 and its importance in our city's growth during the last one-hundred-and-twenty-five years. And the three stars represent three dates in Oklahoma history. The white standing for the foundation of the city shortly after the land run, the blue star for the moving of the cap- blue star for the moving of the Capitol to our city, and the black star for the dedication of the memorial. And my goal here is not necessarily to get one of these five flags selected as a city flag, although if you did, I would be greatly honored and thrilled for all of us. My main goal is to get the conversation started, to perhaps change our, perhaps change what our city's represented from the flagpole. And I believe that right now, our city pride is at an all-time high. We've had a great deal of growth in recent years, and I just think it would look really attractive outside of, I, I think it's something that would be not only in municipal buildings, but in private, you know, private businesses. You'd probably see it waved at sporting events, you might see it flown from clandestine chicken coops around the city. It's, it's something that has a great deal of potential and is really an inexpensive and simple way to create a lot of city pride from, from this position.
Well, we certainly appreciate the effort, and, you know, it's, it's an idea worth, worth discussing, I think, and we certainly appreciate all the thought and care that you took into it. I had a feeling when, that there was probably a lot of, of meaning behind every part of the design, and I appreciate you all explaining it to us. You all are students at Dove Science Academy here in Oklahoma City.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much. Any comments or questions from council?
Mr. Bratt. Thank you. These are all great flags and very interesting. Your students are very, as well as yourself, very innovative in their thinking, and I do appreciate you coming down. I enjoyed the presentation very much. Thank you.
They worked very hard on it, and I was, this is only a small representation of what we had in our school, so I was proud of the dozens of efforts I have from my students.
It's very nice, thank you.
It's very impressive. Thank you all for coming down.
Well, I'm Joe Sarge Nelson, Oklahoma City. The young people in the, the school thing that I just saw, this represents our leaders of tomorrow, so I can't put a damper on that. But my comments today are what's been taking place the last three years here in Oklahoma City. So if you'll bear with me, I'll get this thing done. Last week, when I was here, I chose not to speak at the council at that time because of the important events that were before it, and I think I expressed that reason. The things that are before the council, whether employees and the people of the city, are vital. What happens behind this microphone, it represents you nine people, is vital to this city, and I hope you take it quite serious. But anyway, I know that you people up there in that horseshoe, I'm going to read this. You've got a lot of faithful followers, they watch and they make the remarks on the city's issues called the blog. That's good, except for the fact that they don't absorb what they see, nor do they understand what they hear. And the making their remarks as for me, I intend to be this city's biggest headache, like I told you a long time ago. When you up there don't pay any attention to what goes on down here, that's when I come into play. Now, to my taking names and kicking you-know-what, the people who are here and see me every Tuesday, when I get the chance, need to know and grow up that what is in fact is really going on, when all these times when people are not doing their job, and most of it are not. I'm the guy that tells them and the stuff that you don't tell everybody else. And I don't mean the baloney that you dish out to the public and making it look so real and authentic that the only real reason that you're doing it is simple. I believe that some of you people up on that horseshoe think that people are stupid. They are not. They never have been. They just don't know what to do about it. And that, I assure you, they are listening. I get a lot of calls, a lot more than I should. And because of the way the city and the council, you are the city's council. You are our laws, you are our brain, you are our mind. But all you all have wards, you represent the people in this city. You don't get to talk to all of them, but that's the way it really is. I'm getting ready to take you all on a little, little occasional trip. Some will like it, some won't. But anyway, I'm going to stand before you like Mr. Grenier in Ward One. You do very well. I watch you speak, you look over things when you speak, and you talk. Ward Two, Mr. Shadib, you stand firm on what you know and believe, and then address it. Not many of you do that. Ward Three, Mr. McAtee, you're mayor, he's councilman. Unfortunately, you don't like me. I know that. But I'm always jabbing at your boss up there, just like the expression he's got on his face right now, or a select few on that horseshoe that I pick on. Well, you, sir, would be exactly right. I do just that. And now for Mr. For Ward Four, Mr. Pete White, the very spine, in my opinion, of this council. All of you up there sit up there in that horseshoe, you don't need to tread water very well, because most of you don't. He's one of the few men that don't have to backpedal, and I have to compliment him on that. Mr. Jordan, my prayers are with you when I do pray. You're the man. And now the man with the frown. Ha, got his attention then. Our city manager, Mr. Couch, I ask myself, why do you wear that frown so much? You're always doing this all the time, and everybody out there sees that. Surely, it's not the salary that you make every year, or being governor over 200, 623 square miles of the city and the boss of all you survey. But I do say, why is it you can't tell me what the price of a ticket on a streetcar that's stupidly overrated, it's not needed, and a select few are trying to sell it off to the city of this Oklahoma City that don't even want it? And to begin with, they don't need it. And for the record, for your benefit, I do have counsel, a top legal attorney that I've been discussing with. They are working on this, and if you'd like to discuss this privately, I will. I am getting a court order, I want to see that building at 420 West Main that you promised that you would let me see, and it never happened. Then we come to, I'm just not even going to read this anymore, it's stupid, to the mayor, this is where the road ends, from here goes that way. Ms. Kersey, I commend you for your job. You do it very well. I watch you all a lot, you work hard. I know you don't like me either, but that's okay, because I pick on your boss, but you're entitled to that opinion.
Sarge, you need to wrap it up. You've.
I'm going to wrap it up, mayor, in about a half a minute.
All right, hurry.
All right. Remember, you work for me, I don't work for you. Mr. Greenwell, he's a great man, he's a great leader, he's soft-spoken, you just need to be a little tighter. And I have to commend you, Meg, on your promotion to the MAPS Project. City needed somebody like you on that board to protect their interests and yours as well. And Mr. Pettis, don't let them fool you, you do a hard job, you work very hard at what you do, but the city only gives you what they want to give you. And Mr. Ryan, I compliment you, you fight like a tiger, and I believe you are the tiger of this council. As far as the rest of it, this is what I do for a living. I'm going to be your conscience for quite a while. But that court order is and will be coming, and I do want to see that basement. Thank you.
Michael Hinton.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. I'm Michael Hinton, 1729 Northwest 3rd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73106. And I come here on a more positive note, that you folks might be uplifted and encouraged by words of encouragement I wish to share with all of you, as I always love to do so. Over the past week, I and a dear friend of mine, as usual, we went on a walkabout around downtown Oklahoma City and Midtown, and we're continually impressed and inspired with the new construction and restoration of ornate buildings that have been dormant for years. Further, it is so inspiring to see the sprouting of new eateries in downtown and midtown, along with the development of residential housing. As all of you may have heard from me in the past appearances at this council meetings, that my latest hangout is the Vice Restaurant atop the Devon Tower, as well as being a member of the Oklahoma City Petroleum Club, a patron of Midtown's Ambassador Hotel, which recently opened, and I'm very happy to be a member of the Downtown Urban Neighborhood Association. Thank you, Ms. Salya. The latest note I wish to share with all of you is that I'm impressed and pleased to see the construction underway of a new Oklahoma City Police Headquarters. Your Honor and Council, it is way over time a new facility be constructed, as the old facility should have been demolished and replaced at least 30 years ago, especially the old city jail, which has become nothing more than a sanctuary from, for wildlife, from my observations, and I'm being polite and diplomatic. I'm sure most of you will agree. I will say that the rundown and poorly maintained properties downtown and in midtown are not a fault of you folks. Therefore, I come here today as a citizen to be heard, that you folks are to be commended more than ever for your efforts, and that is taking pride in Oklahoma City, to restore it to the splendor that so sadly and so needlessly vanished years ago. I thank all of you, and I thank Almighty God for this moment to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Any other citizens to be heard? All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.